Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dai.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Shoner.
Present.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here.
Good evening, everybody. At this point, the meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda only. Okay. Got nobody there, so we'll move on. Committee reports. Mrs. Miga, would you like to start?
Hello, everyone here and watching at home. I attended a town council meeting on January 10th, and I wanted to extend a congratulations to our new fire chief, Michael Grosso. We also would like to say thank you to all our volunteer firefighters and their families. Can I take this off when I talk?
Yes, please.
What you all do for the residents of Cedar Grove is amazing, and we appreciate it more than you know. I would also like to say congratulations to our new police chief, John Kennedy. Also, a thank you to our police department for a great job they do and keep doing to keep the Cedar Grove residents safe. I was scheduled to go to an APT meeting, but it had to get rescheduled. It's now January 25th, if anyone is interested in attending that meeting. I have to say my crossing guard, thank you. Go ahead. I would also like to thank all of those involved in getting our crossing guards heated vests. This was such a wonderful idea, and how the community came together to support all of our crossing guards is something I think the public needs to know. Thank you all. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Miga. Mr. Marzullo.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend two committee meetings this month. This SEL meeting, they're doing fantastic things on that committee, implementing the hope, helping others process emotions, which is basically peers helping peers, and they're doing a great job with that. There's also some future events that are in the process of being planned. The Cedar Grove-Verona Collaboration for Wellness Fair is scheduled for May 14 between 12 and 4. Details will follow for that event. Also, in the planning stages is a family-first night, basically hoping to alleviate the stresses of daily obligations for both the parents and students to join evening with their families in hopes of encouraging families to spend quality time together, enjoying some simple things like playing board games, watching movies, cooking a meal together, and just really, you know, getting away from the daily activities. Planning to do that maybe in between sports seasons where there are no practices, but that is a great idea, and moving forward, maybe doing a community-family event night. I also had the opportunity to attend the North End FSA. I had an excellent virtual attendance of over 40 dedicated parents that continue to work in enhancing our students' experiences, support for teachers and staff at North End School while bridging the community at the same time. They had successful events such as the Fun Run and the Java Truck, which they purchased coffee for the teachers, and they are constantly doing a good job, and a great crew of parents over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marzullo. I will be reporting on two committees tonight, first being I attended the South End FSA meeting. That was in person, so we had a nice turnout. Thank you for the opportunity to attend. We were blessed with the third-grade teachers. They were all there in attendance. They talked about some of the things that they were working on within the current classrooms regarding all the content areas, and they were also there to support their fellow coworker, Mrs. Dana Placenti, who was recognized as the Teacher of the Year for South End. It was a well-deserved honor. Mrs. DiMatio spoke on her behalf, and it was really a nice celebration to be a part of. Wanted to give a shout-out, this is a little bit repetitive, to Ms. Jeanette Izzo, who kind of spearheaded the fundraising to purchase the heated crossing guard vest that has pretty much covered all of Cedar Grove. And I also wanted to thank all the people who donated and participated in that, so that's well done. The other committee that I would like to report on is facilities. So we had a facilities meeting last week where Mr. Marzullo and I were brought up to speed on what has already been discussed and some of the ideas about how we want to move forward. We are preparing to move forward with the necessary upgrades that are needed. The issue is that time is of significant essence right now. I would like to announce that we are, we will be pushing out in the next couple of weeks some opportunities for public forums for people to share some ideas, their thoughts regarding possible referendum items. We encourage everyone to participate, so please be on the lookout for that communication that will be coming shortly. And that's all I have as far as committees. Thank you. That's that one side?
No, it's not from now.
I'm not on any committee, so I don't have anything to report.
Lou went.
Okay.
Mr. Marzullo, line.
Okay. At this time, we have a board presentation, Board Members Ethics Training presented by Ms. Charlene Peterson from the School Boards Association. Thank you.
So tell them about the logistics work in the presentation.
We'll sit over here and...
Okay.
Is the presentation uploaded and ready?
Yep. All set.
Okay, oh, great.
Just, I'll just click it to advance it, yeah. Okay, perfect. And then I'm speaking into this microphone, right? Usually I like to walk, I guess I live. Good evening, and wanted to thank the board for the opportunity here to have this conversation. And I really would like it to be a conversation, so if you have any questions from the board, you know, if any board members do, to please, you know, feel free to stop me at any time. I'm so going to take you through some of the components of ethics, and wanted to start out with the very basics of the School Ethics Act itself. So one of the things as board members that we often will talk about or refer to ourselves as volunteers because of all of the time that we put in, the work that we do for the district, but really, we need to think about ourselves differently, and need to think about ourselves as elected public officials. And with that comes responsibility. So the responsibility, as outlined in the School Ethics Act, basically says, you know, that we have to conduct ourselves in a way that holds the respect and the confidence of the people that elected us, and then said that we have to avoid conduct that's in violation of the public's trust, and then even takes it a step further and said that we also have to consider things that could even leave a justifiable impression. So even if perhaps there's nothing wrong, but it would leave an impression that there might be, that's the standard then that we're held to as elected public officials, and we're going to see some examples of how the state has implemented that. So recognizing that, you know, we do have to do ethics training, it's a requirement for us as boards every year, and so, you know, the question is, well, what happens if we don't do it? What are the consequences? So this is NJQSEC, the state's monitoring system. So this then is a board how we are held accountable to ensuring that we do discuss the School Ethics Act every year, and we can see that there are eight points associated with that, and that's a lot of points that we wouldn't want to lose for not having this training. So the School Ethics Act is more than just the act itself that I just read, but then there needs to be more components to it. There needs to be a body that provides oversight, so that's the School Ethics Commission. We're going to talk about the Code of Ethics itself, identifying what constitutes a conflict of interest, and then looking at some other requirements of us, our mandatory training requirements, and then we also have to fill out disclosure statements disclosing any relatives who might work in the district and any financial involvement we might have. So mentioning that we, you know, have a training requirement, one of the things we don't really realize sometimes as board members is that we are the most highly trained public officials in the state. We're the only group that has mandatory training, and so that training is provided by New Jersey school boards. So for those of you that are new members, within your first three years of board service, it is required that you take training in each year of those first three years. So you would have from now until December 31st to take your first year's training, which is just kind of an overall training called Governance 1 of skills that are needed for a new board member. The second year then, you would need to take Governance 2, which goes through school finance and labor relations. The third year is student achievement. And then every time you are reelected in the year following reelection, you need to take Governance 4, which are legal updates. So even if you have been on the board, and I've had board members say I've been on the board for 20 years, do I really need to take it again? And the answer would be yes, if you are reelected again every year following that So I'd mentioned that the School Ethics Commission is the body that provides that oversight. So it is a board kind of similar to how we are a board, with nine members that are appointed by the governor. They're appointed for a three-year term. Thought it was interesting that the majority are non-school officials, five, and then there are two school board members and two school administrators that sit on the School Ethics Commission. So basically, what their jurisdiction is, is in two areas. One of them would be to issue advisory opinions, and so what that means is if you, as a school official, have a question or are not sure whether something would be a conflict of interest or not, you can ask the School Ethics Commission for an opinion on it. So it's basically before the conduct has taken place, and it can only be requested by you as a school official. So an example would be, you know, there was a board a few years ago who a high school senior was elected to the board while he was still in school. So before this person even was seated, a lot of the fellow board members were questioning, well, like, what's going to happen if we have to talk about one of his friends, or there's an issue with the classes he's in, or any of his teachers? And they had a whole list of questions, so presented those questions to the School Ethics Commission, and they basically came back, you know, and said that we wouldn't consider or hold this student to any other, any different standard than what we would hold you to. But again, here's an example of this person hadn't been seated yet, or the conduct hadn't happened yet, so people were, you know, wanting answers ahead of time. And then if it is thought that the rest of us would benefit from having that information be shared, six members can vote to make it public, and they would take out all the identifying information. The other thing that the School Ethics Commission does is also acts on ethics complaints. So anyone can file an ethics complaint if they think that a violation has taken place, and so then they would, you know, consider then that, and so it can be a member of the public, it can be one board member, it can be a member of the staff, where the advisory opinions, it had to be a school official to file a complaint, it does not. So the School Ethics Commission then will consider the complaints that are filed, and then these are the various levels of penalties that can be issued. So the kind of the least restrictive is a reprimand, which is just kind of like a verbal hand slap of recognizing that something, you know, wrong was done. A center is a little more formal. A resolution is read at your board meeting, and where all of your public notices are placed, so that it is, like I said, a little more formal. You can be suspended for a number of months usually, or removed from the board. So the School Ethics Commission makes a recommendation, and then it is up to the Commissioner of Education to make the final decision, considering the recommendation of the School Ethics Commission. So just to kind of give you an idea of kind of the volume of cases that come before the School Ethics Commission, so last year, there were 20 advisory opinions requested, and for whatever reason, last year, none of them were made public. The year before, there was only one. So we used to, we were used to seeing 10 to 12 a year sometimes being made public, so not sure why that's not been happening, but in terms of mandatory training, you can see the violations there that take place, and I have to say that I was surprised that members can be removed from that, but so you can see how seriously then the state takes that requirement. In terms of ethics violations that were brought before the School Ethics Commission last year, there were 29, and you can see typically, most of them get dismissed. A lot of times, it's not because the person did anything, you know, perhaps not that they didn't do something wrong, but the way the complaint was filed, you know, didn't follow the procedure or provide the evidence that was needed. So this, last year in 2020, there was one advisory opinion that was made public, the only one, so wanted to share that again, just so that we kind of get a sense, and we're going to look at how the state used that justifiable impression in looking at our conduct. So here is a situation where a superintendent was hired in the district, his sister-in-law already worked there as a lunch aid, there was an opportunity for an advancement, for a secretarial position. The superintendent tasked the principals with being, with, you know, vetting employees to fill that position. The sister-in-law turned out to be the person that they wanted to recommend before the board, recognizing that it might be a conflict to have a relative of the superintendent be recommended to the board. The superintendent asked for an advisory opinion and said, is it really fair that if someone who's been vetted and the most qualified, you know, can't move forward just because her brother-in-law happens to be the superintendent? And the School Ethics Commission came back and said, sorry, yes, we would consider that to be a conflict, and said that, you know, it could be perceived as an unwarranted privilege or advantage, and it said it could leave a justifiable impression that the public trust was being violated. And then even went so far as to say that the superintendent would have to recuse himself from any discussion on the sister-in-law's employment as a lunch aid. Now we're going to get into the Code of Ethics themselves, so while the advisory opinion, some things pertain to both board members and administrators, the Code of Ethics itself and its in statute is only pertains to board members, so only board members are held accountable to this particular, these tenants of this Code of Ethics. So I am just going to kind of go through each one. So the top is actually the tenant itself, and then the bottom on the slide are those standards that I said that when, say, if someone were to file a complaint, that this, the standards are what the School Ethics Commission would use to consider, you know, whether a violation took place or not. So the first one talks about, says, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the state board of education and court orders pertaining to schools, and saying that desire changes only be brought about through legal and ethical procedures. So this is our way as a board, you know, we are somewhat considered to be the state's kind of boots on the ground, that we're the ones at the local district level that are carrying out the mandates, carrying out the orders, carrying out the things that the state needs to take place in the district, and this is what's holding us accountable to it. Until this last year, it wasn't easy for me to come up with examples perhaps of how that might, how a board might be impacted, but we saw last year a lot of mandates and things that came through that the board was held accountable to carrying out. The next one talks about, you know, making decisions and saying that it's in the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, and that's what I want to emphasize, those two words, "all children," regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. So one of the things that's a little bit different as you are on this side of the board table is that you are responsible for all the children in your district. So as people or staff or people in the community approach you and have concerns about a particular grade, a particular issue, a particular situation, you need to look at that through a different lens, and that lens being, how does this impact all of the students in the district? Because that's who I'm responsible for. This next one helps define our roles. It says, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. So like I said, here we are, we're being told as a board, we're a policymaking body, we engage in planning and appraisal, and then the important part of saying, you know, that we have to consult those who might be affected, so that's why we typically have two readings on a policy. The first reading puts the policy out there, so now it's clear to everyone what that policy language is, so that now the second time before the board votes on it, it's now been out there for a while, and I now, if I'm a member of the public or staff, have the opportunity to come to the board at the next meeting and say, okay, board, just, you know, now, just so you know, this is how this policy impacts me, so that from the board, you can now take that into consideration before voting to adopt that policy. So again, as we talk about what our roles are, and for those of you, when you take New Jersey School Boards training, this is pretty much our mantra of that we, from the board's perspective, don't run the schools, we just make sure that they're well-run, so saying that we will carry out our responsibility not to administer the schools, but then here's another important part, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. So recognizing that we run as individuals, but once we get on the board, we come together as a collective team, and as a team, we work together to help advance the student achievement. Here it says that I'll recognize authority rests with the board and make no personal promises nor take any private action that can compromise the board. So again, emphasizing that team and that as an individual, all of us are accountable to the board, the work of the board, and saying that, you know, basically, we could, the way we can best make a difference is by being part of the board team. How can we, while sitting at this table, make this board be a stronger board? How can we help this board stay focused on student achievement and do our work to help the students as opposed to saying, what can I do separately and independently, and am I taking action that could compromise that work of the board? Here talks about saying that you would refuse to surrender your independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends. So to me, that kind of goes back to, again, to all students, that regardless what promises you made, regardless what platforms, what reasons that you ran, once you're on the board, the group that you are now responsible for are all of the students. This talks about confidentiality and what holds board members to it by saying, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which have disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools, and in all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the school, I'm sorry, of the community for its school. So this then, like, you know, we know then that we're a public body, we do our work in public, but there are some times that, you know, and the state has identified nine different topics that we can discuss in executive session, recognizing that to do it in public could harm the rights of the staff, the students, legal rights of the district, so recognize that there is some information then that we do need, or some topics we do need to discuss in executive session. So this then is what holds us accountable to keeping that information confidential. I mean, one of the ethics cases from last year was a board member who leaked some information about a student to his family, and someone on his family put something on social media about it, so again, thinking, you know, I just told my family member, but not recognizing the implications of that. The other thing that's important too is that the state said, as board members, because we have access to more information than the public would have, that if you are saying something about the schools, that it must be true, that greater weight is given to information that you would disclose about the schools. So again, being held to that standard. Next said, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. So sometimes there's a misperception that the board hires and the board fires. This is making it clear that we just approve or disapprove the recommendation of the chief school administrator, and the state even goes so far as to say that the disapproval should not be for arbitrary or capricious reasons. There should be a recognition that your district has a hiring process in place, and that someone is thoroughly vetted before they are being brought to the board, but from the board's perspective, you know, you are still held accountable then to making sure that, you know, that you are appointing the best qualified person, but again, it's after the recommendation of the superintendent. Here talks about our responsibility to support and protect our school personnel and the proper performance of their duties, and this means all the time. So when, you know, the Code of Ethics is something that we are held accountable to in everything that we do all the time. So this has become more and more of an issue. We're going to look at some cases here that have to deal with social media and board members posting things on social media that are, you know, have, speak negatively of staff, so again, recognizing our responsibility. Here, you know, one of the things that we kind of refer to the board is the court of last resort, basically saying that I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will only act on complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. So while there is perhaps sometimes an expectation that if I stop a board member or ask at a board meeting to have, you know, something resolved, this is saying that from the board's perspective, that's not our role, and it would be outside of what would be considered ethical for us until things have gone through the chain of command. So what we know better than anyone else is we know that chain of command, that we know who we can help refer people to to best help them with their situation, recognizing that it's not us, that as a board, we are not able to get involved until after failure of an administrative solution. So before I leave the Code of Ethics, I'm just going to get into a few cases here, but just wanted to know if anyone had, any of the board members had questions about the Code of Ethics? Nope? Okay. So here are some examples then of how they were carried out. So here's an example of, at a booster club meeting, it's how a board president used his position to intimidate parents, and there was a new coach there. It said he threatened the new coach's job, and this was after last year, and said he attempted to remove the former head coach the year before. So that would be that I of failure to support school personnel, and the person was suspended for three months. Here, a board member voted to approve a resolution that the superintendent completed a miracle. So the board member's child worked in the district, the board member knew that she was supposed to recuse herself on some things, like she didn't evaluate the superintendent, but didn't think that because of just this, you know, voting to say that, yes, this was done, that that was an issue. So someone filed ethics charges, came back and said, yes, it would be considered an issue. So then the board member tried to say, well, you know, my vote really wasn't that important, that there were six of us there, it passed 6-0, so did, you know, my vote was kind of ministerial in nature. So the School Ethics Commission came back and said, we're going to look at conflicts of interest in just a minute, but they imposed that same conflicts of interest in the situation with the superintendent, whose sister-in-law worked in the district, of saying that this might be considered securing an unwarranted privilege or advantage for a family member, and then said, even in the seemingly ministerial matters, the level of conduct expected of school officials must be beyond reproach. So again, making us aware of what the expectations are of us as board members. So in this case, the board member was reprimanded. Here's a situation where a board member volunteered in his church, and at the So again, making us aware of what the expectations are of us as board members. So in this case, the board member was reprimanded. Here's a situation where a board member volunteered in his church. And at the end of the year, the church paid him a $2,000 honorarium. And it came a situation where the church wanted to use the school facilities. So this board member was the one that made the resolution to ask the church to use the school's facilities and then voted in favor of it. Again, when we look at the conflicts of interest, we'll say, we'll see that there was, you know, could be considered having had a financial involvement. Here, we're going to start getting into some social media things a little bit, or, you know, kind of board members expressing their personal opinion in a public way. So here, there was a board member who distributed flyers during a primary to vote for a particular political party. And the person who filed the complaint against the board member said that in this flyer, the board member called him the leader of a radical group. And at the end of the flyer, the board member had their picture, their name, said they were on the Board of Education, but didn't use a disclaimer. And we'll look at in just a minute, like, the disclaimer would say, you know, that this is my personal opinion. I am a board member, but I'm not authorized to speak on behalf of the board. You know, I'm doing this on my own. So said that the board member didn't do that. So because the board member didn't do that, said that E, taking that independent action that might compromise the board, because of not using the disclaimer. F, where we looked at kind of the independent judgment to any political group. And then G, providing accurate information. I guess in this case, there was no verification that this person was the leader of any kind of a group. So the board member was given a penalty of censure. Here, a board member wrote an op-ed endorsing candidates running for the board. And the one person that he didn't endorse is the one who filed the complaint. And said the board, I'm starting to lose my voice here, sorry. And said the board member even openly advocated for their non-election. They did use a disclaimer. And it came back and said that even though you used the disclaimer, you didn't convince us that you weren't speaking as a board member. There were too many references about the board. So said, felt like they took independent action, could be unwarranted privileges, and then had a penalty of reprimand. And then here's the situation where a board member made offensive comments on his Facebook page. And again, school ethics commission came back and said, you were taking independent action that could compromise the board. And said that those disparaging comments could undermine the public's trust in the board and compromise the board's ability to engage with the public. Because this person, their term was almost up and they weren't running again, the most stringent penalty they could do was censure. So here is a sample of what that reprimand could say from the school ethics commission. And then they said, even though if you do use it, it's more your conduct. It's more your intent, that if you are not, like, putting things behind it, you could render the disclaimer meaningless if the substance of your writing doesn't follow along with it. Now here's a situation where a board member, again, said some very divisive comments. And so it came back and they filed ethics charges, saying, how could this person fairly feel the same about all children if they're making these types of comments? So the school ethics commission came back and said, you know, we didn't have the evidence to file charges against you and say you're guilty, but we just want to, again, emphasize what our expectations are. And saying that words like that, that, you know, go against the mission of the board, serve no purpose, and ultimately have the greatest detrimental impact on the very people that your task to serve, the students. So we're continuing to kind of get, you know, expectations or understanding of what is expected of us. So looking at social media, again, making sure that we use the disclaimer, but make sure that our, our conduct helps back up the disclaimer, that we're not saying, you know, that, that, yes, while I'm on the board, or, you know, doing things that would imply the opposite of what's on the disclaimer. So here, just kind of a question as I move into the next parts of it of saying, let's say if there was a resolution to approve the hiring of an auditing firm that you work for, could you participate in that vote as a board member? So we'll see that as we look at conflicts of interest, that the answer to that would be no. That we have to recuse ourselves if there's a benefit to you as a school official or to your immediate family. And in the very bottom box down there, the state identifies what they consider to be your immediate family, which would be a spouse or dependent child residing in your same household. So if there's any unwarranted advantage or privilege, which we've seen some examples of, any financial involvement, basically saying that you can't participate in the discussion and you can't participate in the vote. So we saw immediate family member, but the state also gives us a definition of a relative and related not only to you as a school official, but also to your spouse or partner. And you can see that it's a much bigger, broader definition. I think we figured out the only relation missing is cousin. But everything else seems to be there. So here's a situation, again, as we look at kind of what those ethical considerations might be. If there was an opening for a job, thought it would be perfect for your nephew who lives two towns away. Can you hire that nephew? We'll look at that in just a minute. And if the board is meeting to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation and your daughter's a substitute in the district, can you participate? So we'll see that the answer would be no in both cases, that you can't hire the relative of a board member or the chief school administrator. But sometimes there can be situations where the relative already worked in the district before you got on the board or before you were hired as the administrator. That's the case. You can't exercise, from the administrator's standpoint, direct authority over the relative. From the board member's perspective, we saw in that one case that you can't take part in any employment matters concerning the superintendent or supervisors in the chain of command. And if the board were to be in the position where we're doing a superintendent search, you would not be able to be involved in any of it. Here, as we look at bargaining with the local union, if the board is voting to approve that final memorandum of agreement with the local education association, and you're the teacher in another district, can you participate? Well, it'll, what we'll learn here is that if we have any relative whatsoever that works in the district, we're completely out of negotiations. We can't do anything. If, in this same example here just a minute ago, we asked the question, if you work in another district, if your spouse or dependent child does, then you cannot participate during the negotiations meetings. But once the memorandum of agreement has been drawn, all the salary guides have been drawn, then you are able to vote on the contract absent other conflicts. And we'll look at that in just a minute. And then that big, broader definition of a relative, which most of us have. If you have a relative that works out of your district and in another district somewhere, typically you are able to participate in negotiations and you're able to vote on the contract. So any of those other kind of things that might impact it would be, if, say, if your family member has heightened union involvement. And for you as a board member, if you are, when you're running for the board, if the local union were to endorse you and give some money toward your campaign, you would not be able to participate in negotiations for at least a year. So one of the things that seems a little unusual is that there are also ethics considerations for volunteering in the schools. You know, there was a board member whose wife worked in the district, ran the school plays. And this board member used to help his wife with the plays. So we know when a play is going on, there's a lot of contact with students, with staff, there's a budget. So it was somebody, you know, asked for an advisory opinion and said, would you consider this to be a violation? And came back and said, yes, that in order for you as a board member to kind of maintain that 30,000-foot view of the district and kind of, you know, be looking at that higher level, it would be difficult to do that if you were enmeshed in the building, if you had an active day-to-day presence in the schools. You know, if you had exercised giving directions to staff. So we just kind of have to be mindful of that. Now, there was a member who got on her board. She was the PTA president, she was a homeroom mom, she was actively involved. So she and her, when she got on the board, the other board members were telling her she would have to kind of take a backseat to those things. So she asked for an advisory opinion. And the school ethics commission came back and said, you can be a homeroom mom or you can be the PTA president as long as you do these other things that we said of, you know, not being actively enmeshed in the district, not having a day-to-day presence. So as long as you can, you know, you can stay in those roles as long as you can abide by that guidance. Now, it's recognize that you may be involved in other organizations that may use the school but have their own separate kind of bylaws and budgets. You know, when I was on my board, I was the treasurer of the booster club. So every time the booster club would donate something to the board or, you know, have conversations about it, I would recuse myself. And then they also give the example of, say, sports teams, that you can coach a rec team that uses the school's fields, but you would not be able to volunteer for a school team, just kind of making that distinction. There are sometimes, I just had a question today about this, actually, of a board member had emailed me and said that they were concerned that, seemed to them that a large number of staff was, seemed to be leaving the district and said, you know, what can we do as a board? Can we participate in exit interviews? Or, you know, what can we do? And the school ethics commission came back and said, you know, absolutely not. That that's not the board's role, that's, you know, the board doesn't hire. That's, you know, you would be overstepping your bounds. And said, okay, well, what about if there is, you know, we need to interview for, say, a principal's position or what would be considered an important position? Can the board members participate in that? And the school ethics commission said, you know, came back and said, from their perspective, as a board member, you really only have one employee, and that's the superintendent. Everyone else, you know, reports to the superintendent. But it's recognized that sometimes the superintendent may want to put a committee together that would involve other stakeholders and could include a board member or two. So the difference would not, would be that the board could not go to, or should not go to the superintendent and say, we want to be involved in this. If the superintendent wants to come to the board and say would like a board member or two to be involved in this. And then the school ethics commission said, even if that is the case then, that there should be some restrictions. It shouldn't be more than one or two board members. You should just be making kind of more observations, recognizing that all along, it's the superintendent's responsibility to make the hiring recommendation. So kind of as we're wrapping up and concluding here, you know, making sure that it's important. We know if there are any conflicts with any of our board members. Any questions that your board would have about the interpretation or about school ethics? That your board attorney would be your resource. And then, you know, the school ethics commission has said that things, if you don't know whether something's a violation or not, that's not a good enough excuse, that it's up to you to stay current on what's out there. So New Jersey School Boards does publish school board notes every week. So know that that is a resource for you to stay current on what's going on. And then really, just kind of wanted to close it of saying, you know, that I hope that we all, you know, recognize what an honor it is to be able to serve our community, to be able to serve our schools and our children, and hope that, you know, we, you know, kind of take that into consideration as we conduct ourselves and do our work as board members. So that was all that I had, unless anyone had any questions for me. It was to the board. Sorry, I should have been a little more specific. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here this evening. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mrs. Peterson. Have a good evening. Okay, superintendent update?
Good evening, everybody. Some items here to talk about. So the first one is the Center for Clinical Services at Montclair State University and School's residency program. I did speak about this in December, but just wanted to give everybody an update. At the December meeting and in December, district, in the December district update, it was announced that the Cedar Grove Department of Mental Health has partnered with Montclair State University to address the emergent need for our school district to provide access to quality mental health services for all of our school-aged children, their families, teachers, and community. Licensed clinicians were introduced into the district the week of January 10th and will start to offer students individual and group psychotherapy, crisis evaluations, and consults with teachers and families. On the COVID area, overall positive district numbers continue to drop as we continue to track case numbers throughout the district. Positive case numbers have decreased by 76% from the return after winter break and 61% from last Tuesday to this Tuesday. We continue to watch trends and move forward and with information available. I would like to thank our nursing staff for their diligence every day, after hours, nights, weekends, and over the holiday break. The nursing staff's dedication to provide real-time information helps to make educated decisions for our school community. Some of the, on the resource front, weekly COVID testing. Cedar Grove Public Schools provides weekly COVID testing to employees of the district through a laboratory company concentric bio labs funded by the state of New Jersey. This requirement for staff is based on a requirement by the state for weekly testing, but is also available to our student body. Cedar Grove Public Schools opened testing to not only staff, but our registered students. Weekly's testing is available every Tuesday from 11:30 to 2:55 p.m. We have recently requested an additional testing day during the week. And concentric labs gladly accommodated our request. Every Thursday between the hours of 9:00, 10:00 a.m. to 2:55 p.m. at LRP will be an additional day of testing. For more information, please visit the Return to Schools website. And you may go to the Parent Resources section and click on Weekly Testing. I'm just going to give another, I did talk about this last time, but I think it's worth it. At-home COVID testing. New Jersey Invault Medical Services have teamed up to offer at-home COVID-19 saliva testing for any person who believes they need to be tested, with or without symptoms, at no cost. The service, the service is the only at-home test that will be acceptable through the state of New Jersey. Though we are accepting other home tests as well at this point. For more information, you could also visit Return to Schools, Parent Resources, and then click on the Weekly Testing. Again, these services are voluntary. And to stay connected, please visit our Return to Schools website. Our Curriculum and Instruction Department update. The department is currently working on several areas throughout our school district. The district is currently revising 94 curriculums due to state mandates on revisions. To date, half of the revisions have been executed while the other half will be completed by the end of May of 2020. The elementary schools continue to work on monthly professional development with our staff centered around writing, the writing curriculum. And all grades are currently working in the Lincoln Assessment Window. That would be January 10th through the 20th for Form B. Once Form B is completed, the department and each school will evaluate growth from Form A administered in September of this school year to Form B to provide a roadmap for the remainder of this school year and next year. And just as a reminder, too, you can always find out what the assessment windows for all of our assessments are on the, our main website under Curriculum. I do want to share a correspondence, which I think is a really nice correspondence. It was, the topic would be kindness for Christopher. This comes from the McCallum brothers, Matthew and Michael. They wrote a letter to Dear Mr. Gross, administrators in our Cedar Grove community. My brother and I would like to extend a huge thank you for helping us collect pajamas for our Kindness for Christopher pajama drive. We were able to deliver 620 pairs of pajamas to the patients at Hackensack University Medical Center this year. The support we receive from our community is overwhelming and extremely appreciated. Thank you for making, thank you for- Library and February 24th at Memorial Middle School. We've already had two. One was at North End and one was at South End. So we're making our rounds to each of the schools. And now I'd like to talk to everybody about the Right at School incident. On January 15th, the school community received a communication sharing that on January 14th, an alleged inappropriate incident took place at North End Elementary School during aftercare with an employee of Right at School. That is our morning and aftercare provider and a student. The Cedar Grove Police Department was contacted and an arrest was made. As difficult as this time is, and the yearning for information to help settle your minds, the school district, staff, and board members are unable to comment on this incident as it is currently under investigation with the Essex County Prosecutor's Office. Over the weekend, administration worked with Cedar Grove staff to collaborate on a temporary solution for care while the district works on developing a long-term, sustainable solution. Morning care was available for current Right at School morning care students starting today. Unfortunately, aftercare is not currently an option due to the staffing needs. Cedar Grove Public Schools continues to work with our staff and administration in forging ways forward to providing, to provide the services the community needs and expects. I also want to thank all the teachers who stepped up during this time. This incident took place on Friday. Over the long weekend, our administration worked diligently to put something in place, and our staff stepped up. So I do want to give a big thank you to our staff that did do this. So without them, we would not be able to have morning care starting today. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Okay, under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B6?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I'd like to abstain myself.
A roll call.
I'm broke.
Roll call?
Mrs. Dai.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
I'd like to abstain.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes, but I abstained from B1.
Under bills, can I have a motion for B7?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Roll call?
Mrs. Dai.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Under business, can I have a motion for B8 through B13, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to say that January is School Board Recognition Month, so I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the current board members, both old and new, for their ongoing commitment to the students of Cedar Grove. Thank you.
Roll call?
Mrs. Dai.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Under personnel, a motion to approve S1 to S28.
So moved.
Sorry.
Second.
Discussion?
I have, on S16, I would just like to say thank you for all your years at Cedar Grove in the capacity that you worked as the payroll secretary, and I wish you well. And also thank you for S17, for all your years at Cedar Grove High School as a science teacher, and I wish you well. Have a great retirement, both of you.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mrs. Dai.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Under policies, can I have a motion for S29?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call?
Mrs. Dai.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Can I go back to, I'm sorry, to S21 and S22 that we just approved for the second reading?
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that we have it, that the chaperones know how to get the guidance, the COVID guidance, because we don't know what it's going to be come, when is this? March and May, and how it gets disseminated to the parents, how it gets disseminated to the students, just so that everybody's on the same page.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
So every chaperone or whatever individual is in charge of the Washington DC trip or the cheerleader trip, as far as Washington DC goes, that information is, will be available to the principal. The principal will disseminate that information to the chaperones of that trip. There'll be a hard copy of that information, and that should be included in the parent-student information night. Now, things could change possibly, but whatever the change is, we will update that. As far as the cheerleading national competition goes, that will go to Mr. Gogarty, who will then be able to share that, or athletic director, who will then share that with the coaches. And again, during the information night for the event, the parents should get a hard copy of those health stipulations at that particular moment in time, whatever they may be, because they could change.
Right.
Things are changing constantly, so.
So that will also include the return to school.
It includes everything, includes what's needed to go there and what's needed to come back. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
It'll be documented. You'll actually have a hard copy of that.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. No, it's okay.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to, did we do a roll call? Did we do?
Yeah, for S29, yep.
We did. Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. I have the list here. We have eight member, community members who have signed up, so just be, ask that you be mindful of the time. It's been a little bit of a longer evening tonight. So first, we have Jason Krausnow. I apologize if I'm butchering your name. Please, when you come up, state your name, your address, and any affiliation you may have.
Jason Krausnow. I live at 44 Lewin Road. Congratulations on the two new board members' victories. I wish you the best as you work to support Cedar Grove students during this unpredictable time.
Thank you.
I'd like to address the special education system in Cedar Grove. Now, I have to specify that, like the realized parent group representative who spoke at the December meeting, I do believe that special services by and large are doing their best work. Some of the staff and people involved in the rest of the system, I'm sorry to say, haven't lived up to that standard. So I have sensory processing issues and a condition called Tourette's Syndrome. And so what these mean is that the volume on my ears is turned up to 100% all the time, which you would imagine is a bit inconvenient, and my eyes and hands and legs occasionally sometimes will ignore my commands and decide to do something different when I'm not paying attention. Now, these were issues that made me a less-than-pleasant child, and I'll admit I wasn't fun to be around, but somehow defying those negative beginnings with the district, I beat the odds. I sort of made it out. I was a National Merit finalist. I ran for the championship running team that finished with a pretty good record a few years ago, and I should have been, in my, my maybe-not-so-humble opinion, should have been a success story, at least given the challenges that were facing me. Unfortunately, the uninformed personal beliefs of Cedar Grove School's personnel made that impossible. I couldn't sit away from noise for a few minutes during lunch because that broke the rules, and it wasn't fair to change them for one student. Staff praised me by telling me I was "one of the good ones," not like those other ungrateful students who complained about their second-class status. But the lack of support in an environment that seemed uniquely adapted to worsen these disabilities' impact left a deep and persistent gash. When I spoke to college staff and officials at the relevant support organizations after leaving this district, they often suggested that I go to my community to remedy the issues that this situation created. I have to admit that based on my experiences, I don't believe that will accomplish anything. Fix this situation for the next generation of Cedar Grove students. We in the disability community should not have to beg and grovel for insufficient accommodations or be told that people's personal convictions trump our right to a fair education. Special services should not have to negotiate with school staff who believe that the 1950s, when disabled students were consigned to vile, abusive state institutions, represent the gold standard of social organization and education. If I can undo my own past, I can at least make sure that my younger contemporaries with disabilities have a better one to remember when they leave Cedar Grove. The board and all of its associated staff are welcome to contact me about these issues at any time. Until then, expect me to speak on this issue at every opportunity and every board meeting without hesitation. I hope anyone who's had similar difficulties in the Cedar Grove schools will join me to press for a better future. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your, the courage to come up and share your views. Next, we have Leo Stringer.
Good evening. Leo Stringer for Highview Terrace, Cedar Grove.
Good evening.
Yeah, a couple of things. We seem to have some confusion with our curriculum, is that we don't have a visibility to what's coming out. It's always a surprise. So we had last year, we had like the Holocaust and genocide new, new course, and that was actually, I believe there were at least two presentations about that, went into detail, and that was really helpful. That was really good. So that's coming out as a new course now, this year. But we also got a notification, the kids were, students were told first, before the parents even knew, and it was kind of glossed over at a Thursday junior presentation, that we're adding a social justice course with no idea what's in that course. The course descriptions came out today at 4:30. They were supposed to pick their schedules tomorrow, but now I believe that's been pushed back for the high school. So the concern I have with social justice is not social justice itself, it's just that it has about a dozen different definitions. And most definitions talk about racism, and racism, and redistribution of wealth, which is socialism. And now I read the description that Cedar Grove put in, they kind of tried to get away from that, and it looks like it's going to, going to talk about history of all the civil rights movement in the United States. That's not what social justice is in this day and age, and we, we all know that. So I think it's, we're putting out a bad message, we're not sure what we're, what we're trying to throw, and why, why was this never discussed before now? This, you know, this course was never discussed until now. So I think there's just some concern about how do we have involvement in this curriculum rather than curriculum just being thrown out there without any prior knowledge or any kind of discussion on it? Also, going with the curriculum, I took a quick look at the descriptions, and it's interesting, is that the gym classes for the high school, actually added in there something about, kind of the description of the gym classes, you can't have shorts with pockets, which is interesting. I guess they have the reason for that, you know, quote un, but I noticed, saw that before. Also, if, you need your own clothes. If you borrow clothing, either with consent or without consent, you will be asked to remove them and get a bad, a unprepared mark for the class. So that's worded really bad. So students look at that, it's like, what do you mean? You can't borrow clothes if, if you're done. So that's kind of, that's kind of very strange. I've never seen that before. Also, if you have a medical excuse, it says that you'll have to write a five-page paper. In addition, if you have excuse medical for a gym, you're going to have to replace that with a five-page paper. I think things like this are being thrown in there without discussion, and we should just kind of be informed when we're making, adding things like this to courses. Okay, and also, as far as discussions, I'd like to bring back the discussion on face masks. Okay, there's many studies that are coming out. They've been out. It's known for a year, known all the time, it's nothing new, but now it is being medically proven, face masks are causing more harm than good, especially with students. So I'd like to go back to getting the face mask off the students, regardless of what the state says, and if the state has rules, what kind of federal funding are we going to lose if we don't follow those rules? Because it's, it's not worth it. Okay? Whatever federal funding we have, we use federal funding to buy a cafeteria system, to get free lunches, to buy a school bus, two pickup trucks, a tractor, all kinds of things like that, so maybe we can have some kind of visibility into the budget. I think that's kind of hard to find now also, is where we're spending the money. So if we can go, go against some of these rules as a district, and I believe we have the authority to do that, without following these governor's advice, when it does not make sense. The legislature of New Jersey is trying to push back against this advice, this governor, so we should do well also. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Next, we have Mr. Martinelli.
John Martinelli, 30 Hillside Avenue. Excuse me. Good evening, board.
Good evening.
In the wake of recent events, I strongly urge all Cedar Grove schools to divert some of the monies of the school budget to install cameras in the classrooms to ensure the physical and mental safety of our children. Every parent should have some input or a voice on, I apologize if I overlap on what some other people said prior, you know, before me. Every parent should have some input or a voice on what is taught to their children in his or her school. Parents should be notified beforehand on any newly-created courses that some may deem controversial and debatable to teach in nature due to the children's age. For example, special interest groups, along with some parents, may or may not have had input in creating a new course on social justice issues. This may involve complex issues some students and parents may not find appropriate. Race is a very complex issue and many different views. The administrators made this course an elective, so students with parents have an option to take or not take the course. That's fine. It's just so ironic, when I requested on numerous occasions at board meetings to have my son opt out of SEL material, and I'm not saying all SEL material, that my son felt defensive. I specifically said it had an adverse effect on him being only in the fourth grade. I was told by the board specifically, "No," because the material was infused in all his subjects. How convenient, how convenient. See the double standard? Why are the overwhelming majority of parents have no input on this yet can have other courses as an elective? I just want to bring up a couple of examples of what's going on, like as far as my family with the kids with the input. On New Year's Eve, I attended a party over my dear friend's home. We were watching the Patriot movie starring Mel Gibson around the Revolutionary War. My friends asked my son and daughter simple questions about what took place in some of its play, and some of its players, or, you know, people that served. They were shocked, to be honest with you. My wife and I were embarrassed on how little they knew about American history. Yet, when asked about what they learned at history, my son and daughter were road scholars when it came to social justice issues. Lastly, this happened Friday, I'm just bringing this to light, and I have to admit, the people at the school are giving it strict attention, and they're going to get back to me. I have a daughter, Diana, who's in fourth grade. My daughter, who is currently in fourth grade, returned from school very upset this past Friday. I inquired what happened. There was a video of a young African-American girl in the third grade. The premise of the story was to teach inclusion and diversity with the use of crayons. No problem, I'm okay with that. She is a, she's, she specified that she's in a predominantly white class. She had a positive impact with her classmates telling them that more than one color peach, children's, children are coming all colors. So I said, "That's fine." So I asked my daughter, like, "What's the problem?" So she said, "I reviewed the video."
Every parent should have some input or a voice on, I apologize if I overlap on what some other people said prior, you know, before me. Every parent should have some input or a voice on what is taught to their children in his or her school. Parents should be notified beforehand on any newly created courses that some may deem controversial and debatable to teach in nature due to the children's age. For example, special interest groups along with some parents may, or may not, had input in creating a new course on social justice issues. This may involve complex issues some students and parents may not find appropriate. Race is a very complex issue and many different views. The administrators made this course an elective, so students with parents have an option to take or not take the course. That's fine. It's just so ironic, when I requested on numerous occasions at board meetings to have my son opt out of SEL material, and I'm not saying all SEL material, that my son felt defensive. I specifically said it had an adverse effect on him being only in the fourth grade. I was told by the board specifically no, because the material was infused in all his subjects. How convenient, how convenient. See the double standard, why are the overwhelming majority of parents have no input on this, yet can have other courses as an elective? I just want to bring up a couple of examples of what's going on, like as far as my family with the kids with the input. On New Year's Eve, I attended a party over my dear friend's home. We were watching the Patriot movie starring Mel Gibson around the Revolutionary War. My friends asked my son and daughter simple questions about what took place in some of its play, and some of its players, or, you know, people that served. They were shocked, to be honest with you, and my wife and I were embarrassed on how little they knew about American history. Yet, when asked about what they learned at history, my son and daughter were Rhodes Scholars when it came to social justice issues. Lastly, this happened Friday, I'm just bringing this to light, and I have to admit, the people at the school are giving it strict attention, and they're going to get back to me. I have a daughter Diana who's in fourth grade. My daughter, who is currently in fourth grade, returned from school very upset this past Friday. I inquired what happened. There was a video of a young African-American girl in the third grade. The premise of the story was to teach inclusion and diversity with the use of crayons. No problem, I'm okay with that. She is a, she specified that she's in a predominantly white class. She had a positive impact with her classmates, telling them that more than one color, peach, children's, children are coming all colors. So I said, that's fine. So I asked my daughter, like, what's the problem? So she said, I reviewed the video with her. Once I reviewed the video with her, she said that she felt a fellow classmate, she felt bad when she said a fellow classmate told the African-American classmate her skin color looked like dirt. Rena asked me why she was so mean to her by saying her skin looked like dirt. Rena picked up on the African-American girl feeling bad when her classmate said, "His skin looks like sand," and he stated, "Your skin looks like dirt." The African-American girl's response was, "Why is the dirt the first thing that comes to mind? You could have said chocolate." So see, my daughter felt bad for the African-American girl, seeing how mean that child was. But what happens is, when she sees that that other child was of the same skin color she was, she felt offended. So, and then she felt, in a sense, that she, she was part, because of the same color, made the girl feel like she was part of that insult, okay? So I showed my son the same video, my son John, he's in fifth grade now, and his reaction was the same. He, and many of his friends felt the same when they were shown this video last year in first grade. Okay. So you see, this is not an isolated incident. In my view, the negative view children have of themselves, even though the story tried to teach inclusion, which is positive, children at this very, very young age digest, try to digest a complex issue involving race differently than adult or older child would. We need to be ve, all I'm saying is, and it's not a knock, all I'm trying to say is, we have to be very, very, very careful. Kids are not, kids are smarter than we think, and I'll tell you, we could learn a lot from these kids. And like I say, unfortunately, the way the curriculums are today, I guess, I don't understand. But children don't really, when children play, they don't see color, they really don't. And it seems like every time, you know, I guess when they go into the education system, I'm not knocking, this is all across the United States, it seems where they pick up these differences. And then I have just one more question. I appreciate the time. I just wanted to get this off my chest. This is an ethics question, since it was, actually, the woman did an excellent job. I want to thank her. Question's asked if there's a violation, an ethics violation, if a board member, specifically an ex-president, correspond via Facebook with a teacher within this district to discuss happenings at Board of Education meetings. That's basically the question. Just want to know if it's a yes or no. And the other thing I said about my daughter, like what, you know, I want to take on going forward, would she be exposed to these type of story tellings or whatever? You know, like really, like, take a look, you know, to see if any, any child, not just my daughter, other people did get offended, but I mean children of all colors. Doesn't matter, you know, what type, what religion, whatever, I just want to make sure that daughter's really giving in to this, because children are being offended. Children are coming home upset. That's it, I'm sorry, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Patricia Montana.
Hi, good evening. Patricia Montana, five Emory Court. I have a question for Superintendent Grosso. So the high school just rolled out nineteen new electives, and the community is curious whether the high school intends to hire additional teachers and staff to cover those new courses.
That's a really great question, because there seems-
Thank you.
Yeah, because there seems to be a lot of electives there. So just to give you a little bit of a perspective on this, so prior to this list going out of possible course offerings, it doesn't mean that they're all going to take place. The high school did not have a semester courses. So what that does, so the thought process behind that is, is that when you have a full year course, and I'll give an example of pottery, for example. Pottery is a very popular course. So ultimately, what, what the counselors try to do is, they try to place as many kids as they possibly can get into that class, but historically, it's been a full-year course. So if they could place forty kids into that course, that becomes not available to the other kids. And that does a couple of things, which I'll talk a little bit about, the transcript. So by making courses like that, or new courses, a semester course, what it does is, it enhances a child's number-one opportunity, but what it also does is, it increases their, the transcript. So when they do apply to colleges, the current, the current system that we have this year, you're limited on what you can take, because there's only so many periods within that double, rotating double drop here, schedule. So by creating semester courses, what you do is, you enhance the opportunity for the child to take a eclectic group of courses, and possibly take courses that they wouldn't have never had to begin with, because they need to meet or attain the New Jersey standards for graduation. But it also, again, like I said, it develops a pretty hefty transcript for when they do apply to a particular college in a particular field, they can at least show that they've taken some courses at the high school level. So for example, if someone's going in for social work, and they want to take psychology or sociology, those courses could at times have been a full-year course, but you really, if you really want to go in that field, you would want to take sociology, psychology, et cetera. So it does make that advantage. The reality of it all is, is that the course listings, what courses will be provided and taught will be determined on the enrollment in those courses. And the reality of it is, is that when you look at a, the average class size of a junior class, you're looking at around one hundred twenty students, so it's not possible to take all those courses. Those courses came, the idea of those courses and those opportunities came in that, from students, actually, and it started, the process started last year in the spring, when teachers started to ask questions of their students and do an informal background of, what would you be interested in, what would you want to do, what courses would you want to take? So therefore, a lot of those ideas came up from the teachers, the teachers were able to create some of these courses. But again, to your point, we're a small district. You can't, you can't possibly teach all those courses without hiring a massive amount of teachers, and that's just not, that's not responsible, it's just not reasonable or attainable. But if it starts to develop, especially with the semester courses, if it starts to develop new courses, new opportunities over time, that's, that's the purpose of that.
Could I just get a slightly shorter answer? Is the intention to hire any new teachers for the twenty-two, twenty-three school district year to cover any of those new electives?
Uh, no, not at, not at this time, no. I mean, when you do that, you would have to look at your budget process and see if there's availability. I think every year, when you look at a budget, I mean, you would look and say, oh, if we have a overwhelming response to a particular area, would we want to hire somebody else? That's only if the budget allows. If the budget doesn't allow that, you can't do it.
Okay, so we're, so we're looking at nineteen elective classes, but in reality, there's going to be a very small subset of those that'll actually be offered to the students, given or current-
Possibly, you know, it all comes down to scheduling. That's what it comes down to. No, but I-
It's not complicated, I understand it comes down to scheduling.
Yeah, yeah, no, and the unique, the unique thing about the high school scheduling is, when you have a double-rotating drop, that schedule in itself offers more, more availability to, for courses, rather than probably what most of us here went through, which was a basic straight eight, which is your periods one through eight, and it's the same way every day. You don't get that rotation, and you wouldn't get those classes in that format. So the schedule, the current schedule allows for more flexibility, but then it's also, it's up to the high school, the counseling department, to really look at that and say, okay, if there's an overwhelming response to this particular course, or courses, how do we start to maneuver staff around and make them more available?
Okay, but I guess the community should know that, while it's exciting that there are so many new course offerings, the reality is that a select subset of them will, will in fact be available, given that we're not expanding our staff.
I think that what you want, what you really want to look at is growth over the course of several years. Mr. Bayer actually did a presentation last year and talked a little bit about students taking particular courses. And one of the things that we were missing here in Cedar Grove was the idea of semester courses. So when he did, he did introduce that concept, I think it was at the end of last year or so, it's a, it's a multi-year process. So as exciting as it is, we have to take into consideration our people power, our space, how do we, how do we utilize our space appropriately, and how do we schedule to the best of our ability, even if that means kind of maneuvering around a little bit? But it's something that, my expectation isn't something that you would look, oh, automatically it's going to be all those courses next year. I think it's something as you, you're building up your program planning guide.
Yeah, yeah. And that's helpful, and it's helpful to manage the expectation of our children, who are possibly excited about some of the offerings, but they-
Sure, absolutely. And that goes, I'm going to cut you off, but that also goes to the fact where, one of the things we've heard is, it's disappointing, because certain students want to take certain courses right now, and even last year and the years before, they just were never able to do it, because, and it was very disappointing to them, because they had a fit in the particular standards from the state to graduate. So the way the schedule was, even our music program, that's something I would love to see grow, but you don't have enough space or time within the schedule or the classes, because everything is full year, you're kind of, you're kind of locked in, you know? So it's, it's throughout the course of time and working together.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Great question, though.
Thank you, Mrs. Montana. Next, we have Lisa Casilli. Okay, next, we have Victoria Schreiber.
Hi, Victoria Schreiber, one forty-nine Brunswick Road. Welcome to the new board members. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the district and the board for everything that they've done so far in, in creating the EDEC and working to try to meet some of the state's DEI initiatives. And I just wanted to make sure that, I know a lot of people have been worried about, as, sorry, I don't like, I'm very nervous. You know, fears that have been expressed about their white children coming home and feeling upset about, about being white, or about what's being presented to them. And I just kind of wanted to tell a story about why I think for, for my children, I think that's so important, and I just want to make sure that that work continues. So when I was in high school, I was the, this story makes me look pretty bad, so a little grace. I was the editor of my newspaper, and we did a senior Last Will and Testament, where we left things to the teachers, and I just kind of approved everything that was written. But I was the editor, so it always passed my desk last. And there was, it was a predominantly white high school. I think we had about three black girls in our graduating class, there was one black teacher on the staff. And what was left to her in the Last Will and Testament was "A devil's advocate, so you don't have to play one anymore," because that was a phrase you used a lot, and "a watermelon." Which I, you know, at seventeen in two thousand and three, I was not aware of the racist history of that, which, you know, if anyone isn't aware, there's a pretty longstanding sort of history of that as a racist trope. And it was never brought up by my faculty advisor either, it was brought to me by one of the few black students who I graduated with, you know, that, that comes across really racist. And I didn't, and then I had to defend that over and over again, and I just, I just didn't know. And I took AP US History, and that was never taught to me. And I just, that's the kind of thing, I just want my kids to be better than me, and do better than me. And so I just hope we can continue those efforts, that's all.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And you did a great job. Next, we have Sal Minieri.
Sal Minieri, twenty-six Sweetwood Drive. I'd like to express my hopes that the board is successful this coming year, and congratulations to the newest board members. One personal note, for centuries, people of faith understood that we can learn more important lessons about life from our children, rather than from ourselves. We've stressed ethics, and we stress differences tonight. Ethics, never enough, and differences too much. For the last six months or more, the board has concentrated on airing differences between themselves and parents and individuals in attendance. May I suggest that we not stress on our differences? Our differences seem to have gotten in the way of educating our children. May I also suggest that we permit our educators to teach our children why they are all the same, not why they are different. Let our teachers demonstrate to our children not why they are different, but why they are all equal. With that in mind, I would like to relate a short story that I came upon not too long ago. A superintendent of a school in a poor district in the country approached one of the teachers and asked the teacher, Patricia, "The children in your district had the greatest graduation rate in the entire district. What is the secret of your success?" Well, she answered, "I owe my success to two of the most influential people in my life. When I told my parents that I wanted to become a teacher, they taught me a lesson I have never forgotten. Patricia, remember three things. Value people, not their differences. Praise effort, and reward performance." Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, so I'd like to close that portion of the meeting, announcement of future meetings. The next meeting is February sixteenth. Executive session's at six-thirty, regular meeting is at seven-thirty. Please note the change in that date from the original list of dates. And March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, six-thirty executive session, seven-thirty regular session. Meeting is adjourned.